Half a day, the Committee on Justice is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, November 23rd, 2022. The time is 2:42 PM. In compliance with the open government law, public notices for this roundtable public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and on the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, November 15, and Friday, November 18, 2022. The hearings being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also emailed to all senators and media broadcasting outlets on the same This hearing is hosted by the Guam Legislature's AV and Protocol staff and my committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. The goal of this roundtable public hearing is to receive public testimony and as much as possible facilitate discussion on the proposed provisions in Substitute Bill 112-36COR. In past hearings on the original Bill 112 and our informational briefings, we've seen that due to the high volume of oral testimony received, dialogue between the Senate panel and those providing testimony was extremely challenging, and therefore we will be conducting today's hearing a little differently. The 2:00 PM hearing will in fact be different than the 5:00 PM because there are many fewer people signed up to testify at 2:00 PM than 5:00 PM. So for today's hearing, I will first introduce the bill. We will then receive testimony from the panels of those who've signed up. Participation will be by order of sign up and considering the need for special accommodations. Each panel will run approximately, well, I don't think we have that issue today, so I'm going to skip that part, or at 2:00 PM at least. Participants are welcome to provide unlimited written testimony before November 28 that can be emailed or submitted to my office. All testimony will be included in the public report on this bill for consideration of senators. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. After all individual testimony has been provided, we will begin the discussion portion of the hearing. Senators will ask questions to the panel regarding the testimony and specifically to provisions of the Substitute Bill. The order of questions will begin with the chairperson followed by the panel of senators. I ask that each participant please address the chairperson when responding to questions or making comments. Keep questions and testimony confined to the substance or nature of the Substitute Bill. A copy and the summary of Substitute Bill 112 has been provided to all participating panel members and is posted on the legislature's website for those who are viewing. All testimony from prior public hearings on the same bill are posted on my website, which is senatorterlahi.com. So I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending today's roundtable public hearing. Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Telo Taitigui, Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, colleagues. There is a second hearing scheduled on Substitute Bill 112 at 5:00 PM this evening. For that hearing, we will be able to accommodate four panels of 12 people per panel in the allotted hearing time. That's a total of 48 people. If you were not able to be on this afternoon's panels, you can sign in for the 5:00 PM hearing with my office staff. For the record, invitations to provide testimony were publicly noticed for all members of the public and also sent to the Guam Medical Society and Guam Medical Association, and we ask that they send those letters in turn to each of their members, to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners, the Guam Nurses Association, the Office of the Attorney General, the Judiciary of Guam, and the Guam Bar Association. All right, so now I'm going to, as sponsor, main sponsor of the bill, and again, so our one agenda item is Bill 112-36COR as substitute by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. It was introduced by Theresa M. Terlahi, Telo Taitigui, Joanne Brown, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Joe S. Augustine, V. Anthony Ada, Talina Cruz Nelson, Christopher M. Duñez, Quinton Iregel, Amanda L. Shelton, Jose P. Terlahi, Sabina F. Paris. It's an act to amend Chapter 10 of Division 1, Title 10 Guam Code annotated, to add a new 42A 101I20 to Chapter 42A of Division 3, Title 7 Guam Code annotated, to amend Section 42A 101J of Chapter 42A, Division 3, Title 7 Guam Code annotated, relative to medical malpractice in the territory of Guam. So I will, as the main sponsor, introduce the bill. And thank you again for those who are here with us today. So following the public hearings, the two public hearings that we had, and on the ads introduced Bill 112-36COR that were held on July 7th and July 12, 2021, the committee has substituted the bill in consideration of public testimony as well as feedback from the numerous informational hearings held in the last two terms on the current mandatory malpractice arbitration, oversight of medical licensing boards, and careful review of NCSL's analysis of malpractice laws and other jurisdictions. It was because of the advocacy of families who lost loved ones due to alleged medical malpractice who were courageous enough to share their stories and insist that this legislature address that inequity and injustice perpetuated by the current law, that we continue to try to find a solution even with the immense political pressure and even personal attacks upon members of this body and those assisting to find solutions to improve patient protection and care on this island. I want to thank all of you for your perseverance. I know that some supporters of this bill have been denied health care during this process, but threats to further limit access to specialist care or deny services based on fear are not a solution and not logical based on the continued special screening protections provided to doctors. GMH has full capability to contract with any specialists and afford them the protections granted to current specialists also practicing at GMH. And I want to acknowledge the numerous health care professionals that genuinely and respectfully engage this committee to help find fair, impartial, and reasonable solutions that address the concerns of both patients and health care professionals. And I'm truly grateful and thank you for your assistance. I'd like to let the doctors know that I hear them and how special they are to our community and that I agree with them. The Guam's unique health care circumstances require extra protections of health care providers to protect them from frivolous claims. If I did not agree with them, I would have just attempted to simply repeal the law and let cases go straight to court as they do for all other industries and professionals. But I've never tried to do that. I've tried to find another way that doctors would continue to be treated differently than every other profession, every other industry in Guam, protected more than any other because for every other profession and industry, if you do something wrong, we get, you can be taken to court directly. But we are continuing in our committee to find a way for doctors to be more protected. But we cannot do that in this current fashion when we know that instead of preventing frivolous claims, the courts are pointing out that the law may be preventing poor people's valid claims. I believe we should preserve the ability to make claims for all patients, not frivolous claims, but good claims, and that is why we are trying to find a process that is less costly than the current process, just as fair as the current process but less costly. Guam doctors continue to be afforded additional protections in Guam laws, including our statute of limitations. In almost every other state, and I've looked at all of them, the statute of limits is either two years or three years or longer, except for Louisiana, Kentucky, Ohio, California, and Guam, where it is only one year from discovery, and that means you have to bring your lawsuit sooner, gather your resources sooner, find a lawyer sooner than every other place. In Hawaii, plaintiffs are allowed two years from discovery, not to exceed six years from the act. On Guam, it is one year from discovery and within three years from the act. In one of the district court cases, Chief Judge Manglonia stated in describing our current mandatory arbitration law that, quote, "It would be manifestly unfair to enforce a statutory requirement against a person financially incapable of arbitrating. Doing so would have the absurd result of prohibiting the poor from recovering on a claim they might be otherwise entitled to. It would likewise shield the health care industry from ever owing liability to the underprivileged." There is no evidence to indicate that the Guam Legislature enacted the MMAA with such a draconian purpose in mind. I too do not believe that the laws were intended to shield the health care industry from any liability to the poor or the underprivileged, and thus have attempted for two terms now to remedy this and have substituted the bill to further address these concerns. It's very clear from the legislative history of the various medical malpractice and arbitration laws on Guam that special preference and protection is intended for the health care industry in Guam, and we are making our utmost efforts to preserve that. So the goal of the legislation remains the same: to prevent court actions against health care providers for liability in situations where the facts do not permit a reasonable judgment of malpractice; to make fair and impartial the proceeding of such claims that are or reasonably may be well-founded; and to mitigate the cost of arbitration to remove a huge barrier for working class and indigent patients who currently can't afford the estimated costs and fees for arbitration, and that is on top of the costs and fees for a trial. And while it's nearly impossible to incorporate every recommendation and address every concern raised, the committee did its best to address some of the major concerns expressed by the public and health care providers. The changes contained in Substitute Bill 112 include: the bill amends the current medical malpractice mandatory law, mandatory arbitration law, to keep arbitration as an option, and put a government-funded mandatory pre-screening process in lieu of expensive arbitration for any claim for damages for personal injury or death. Requires that prior to the filing for a medical malpractice pre-screening, a claimant or patient shall provide no less than a 45-day notification to a health care provider of his or her intent to file a complaint. During this period, the applicable statute of limits shall be told. The Substitute Bill further authorizes that prior to pre-screening, a health care provider may make an offer of reparations in full confidentiality. The bill requires that all communications regarding reparations made in writing to a patient by a health care provider will be privileged and may not be used by any party to establish liability or measure of damages attributable to the offerer. The bill reinforces protection of a health care provider's current rights to expressions of sympathy or benevolence relating to any pain or suffering or death of a patient involved in the incident to the patient or the family of the patient. Such expressions will remain inadmissible as evidence of an admission of liability in any civil or any arbitration proceedings. So these provisions were added in consideration of testimony provided by Dr. Berg of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and other health care providers to mandate the doctor and patient meet and resolve at the lowest level. After the 45-day notice notification period, if a claim is not resolved between the parties, a pre-screening complaint may be filed with the court. The court shall then seal the case immediately from public access and refer the matter to a pre-screening judge for pre-screening. Parties can agree while the matter is sealed to go to arbitration on their own terms or to go to mediation. Arbitration will be conducted as agreed to by the parties. Doctors can entice patients into arbitration with the three-member panel that currently exists in law or a panel of one, or really, it's up to the parties to agree on what type of panel they will go with in arbitration. And providers will have the opportunity to convince plaintiffs of the benefits of arbitration over a pre-screening, this other pre-screening process, by convincing them of the swiftness or the expertise of the arbitration or by paying the arbitration costs and fees, as we've seen in some of the district court cases. It's totally up to the parties and can be cheaper than the current process. If neither arbitration or mediation is agreed upon, the pre-screening will be conducted by a pre-screening judge as decided by the courts. This is changed from magistrate judge, which we put in the original bill, and this was amended due to concerns raised regarding the qualification of a magistrate judge to make a pre-screening determination. The pre-screening filing fee is paid by the claimant, and each side will continue to pay for its own expert witness fees and attorney's fees. The judiciary of Guam shall submit an annual report of the number of claims filed, number of cases that opted for mediation or arbitration, number of cases resolved through the pre-screening process, number of cases found to be meritorious, and number and outcomes of cases that proceeded to trial after pre-screening. The courts would enact rules and procedures implementing the pre-screening provisions of this act. The current standard of care under Guam law would remain intact. In other words, what is not malpracticed today will not be malpracticed tomorrow under this law. This was intended to protect doctors based on Guam's special situations. I just want to read that. So the current standard of care on Guam is Section 10106. The prevailing standard of duty, practice, or care by a reasonable physician in the same field practicing medicine in the community at the time of the alleged malpractice shall be the standard applied in the arbitration. And this will now be applied to the pre-screening, arbitration, and the trial. The current statute of limitations, or the time in which you must file your case, for example, one year, under Guam law, remains intact. I do want to note that I intend to add specific language to ensure that the statute of limitations will be told or held in abeyance during the 45-day period of consultation between the claimant and the defendant, and this amendment would be to encourage settlement. Any claim against any defendant within the small claims statutory limit would be exempt from pre-trial screening and shall be filed with the Small Claims Division. And this provision in the Substitute Bill was added so that a person wouldn't have to pay for arbitration filing fees and arbitrator's fees to seek recourse for small amounts, and the current small claims amount is $10,000. The proposed pre-screening process would consist of, and I'll make it very brief, within 20 days of service of a pre-screening complaint. This is after the 45-day period. They file their pre-screening complaint, they serve it on the defendant, the defendant shall file an answer within 20 days. The judge will examine the testimony previously provided to mandatory arbitrators, same testimony. If the judge finds that the evidence supports the conclusion that the defendants failed to comply with the appropriate standard of care and that the conduct complained of was a factor in causing damages to claimants, the pre-screening judge shall proceed to set a monetary settlement value on the claim distinguishing between economic and non-economic damages. The record of pre-screening proceedings and the pre-screening decision reached by the judge shall remain sealed for 30 days. However, the pre-screening judge may order the pre-screening decision sealed longer or permanently upon agreement by the parties, and the decision shall be sealed permanently if a trial is not pursued. Either party may pursue their right to a jury or a non-jury trial within 30 days after the pre-screening judge renders its decision. If the claim proceeds to trial, the pre-screening judge's decision for or against a claim of malpractice shall be admissible as evidence, but the decision shall not be conclusive and can be refuted by a defendant. The 40% standard for cases that move on to civil trial will remain, and this was put in place previously to discourage appeals from arbitration, and this will remain in place to discourage appeals from pre-screening as well. This means that if a party pursues a civil trial and is able to improve upon the pre-screening award by 40% or more, it will be entitled to the costs of the trial and all other remedies as provided by law. But if it proceeds to an appeal and does not receive an award that is 40% or more higher than the pre-screening award, they would pay the costs of the trial and other remedies as provided by law to the other party. I want to note, and I sent this notice to the Guam Medical Association and Guam Medical Society, that I do intend with the assistance of my colleagues to amend a couple provisions of the Substitute Bill, and one would be the standard of care. As I read to you the standard of care, duty, practice, or care by reasonable physician in the same field practicing medicine in the community at the time of the alleged malpractice, I want to add to the end of that standard of care clause, provided that it shall be an affirmative defense that can be disputed for a physician who in good faith with the informed consent in writing of the patient and provided care in another specialty because of the unavailability of a practitioner on island who offers said specialty when the failure to provide said care would have adverse consequences for the patient. This was language provided in one of the testimonies, and this is again to protect those on Guam who are practicing outside of their fields because of a lack of specialists in those fields on island. It says it will be an affirmative defense that can be disputed for a physician who in good faith with the informed consent in writing of the patient provided care in another specialty because of the unavailability of a practitioner on island who offers said specialty when the failure to provide said care would have adverse consequences for the patient. And this is to encourage practice again to save lives. And another amendment that I am going to propose to the committee to further discourage frivolous litigation is to add, quote, "After the verdict is received and filed, or the court's decision rendered in a trial de novo, the trial court sua sponte shall issue findings of fact and conclusions of law announcing whether plaintiff filed a frivolous suit, and if so, impose sanctions as appropriate against plaintiff in accordance with the standards set forth in Guam Rules of Civil Procedure, in addition to any sanctions imposed on counsel." And so currently in Guam law, there is already protections against frivolous lawsuit, but this is again going to restate it and allow the courts on their own to make this determination and impose sanctions. And again, this is to additionally protect doctors from frivolous lawsuits. All right, so this concludes my introduction of the bill. And so before we begin testimony, I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you, Senator. Before we begin testimony, I want to thank all of you that are here. Most of you have participated in past hearings to provide your feedback and perspective on this issue, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to note for the record that I've also introduced and held hearings on other bills to address the wide range of concerns raised during oversight hearings regarding the handling of complaints at the licensing board level and public access to information on medical providers, and while each licensing board is entitled to set and use all of its fees for necessary purposes, my colleagues and I also added amendments to the fiscal year 23 budget act that increase appropriations to the HPLO office to push for swifter action in that regard. Two of the bills that are now public law, one is relative to promptly informing persons or entities who have reported to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, to promptly informing them of the outcome, the decisions and actions of the board. Another public law is relative to enacting the Ending Forced Arbitration of Sexual Assault and Sexual Harassment Act of 2022 into Guam law. This is to prevent a contracted forced arbitration in the cases of sexual assault and sexual harassment. The other bills currently being considered are relative to changing the composition of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to add for public representation and relative, and another bill relative to public disclosure of physician profiles. All right. And again, the legislature also added additional monies to the Guam Memorial Hospital to recruit and hire specialists in the fiscal year 2023 budget up to the amount of $1 million. So we will now accept testimony from the first panel. We'll begin with David Lubovski and then Mitch Thompson, and I see Dr. Manaloto here. So, Mr. Lubovski, you may begin.
Thank you, senators.
Sorry, my colleague is correcting me that it's $5 million, but we'll check that instead of $1 million, but we'll double-check. Thank you.
Hi. My name is David Lubovski. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and senators, for allowing me to give testimony again in support of Bill 11236 as substitute. I won't spend time on my story, as you all by now are familiar with my son Asher, but are you familiar with the hundreds of other medical negligence stories? Of course, you are not, as there is no path for them to bring their tragedies to light in the current draconian system. This will change with Bill 11236 using the mandatory pre-screening process with a judge in lieu of the expensive arbitration MMAA. I do suggest that the statute of limitations, which is only one year now, be extended to two years. This is similar to other locations, two years, and some places have three years to file. Also, as the speaker alluded to, the clock should stop once the 45-day notification to a health care provider is made by a complainant of intent to file to prevent the statute of limitations from running out while they negotiate. I also further suggest that you may want to add language here as to what happens after the 45 days if the complainant does not file. Notifying a medical provider of intent to file and have that provider pay legal fees, et cetera, and then nothing happens would be an unfair hardship to a medical provider. So in other words, what I'm saying, you give them the 45 days, the doctor runs out and finds a lawyer and does consultation. finds a lawyer and does consultation, then nothing happens after the 45 days. That's money that the medical provider has spent, and nothing, it doesn't go any further than that point. This could be a point of termination in the process. If the 45 days lapses without cause and nothing is filed without a valid reason, it would also help to prevent frivolous claims. One issue, it's my trigger issue that I have with the pre-screening, is states that the judge will use any findings of fact and decisions made by the Guam Health Licensing Boards on the same subject of complaint. Realistically, I know that there's nothing I can say that will change this, but for the record and to show some of the issues, I'll tell you why I feel that way. The Guam Board of Medical Examiners, and many doctors on Guam have said, let's have the Guam Board of Medical Examiners look at these cases, let's them be in charge, they can determine what's going on. The issue with that, and that's not a bad idea, but the issue with that is the Guam Board of Medical Examiners in four years and approximately 47 cases, if not more, has never, ever decided in favor of a medical consumer complainant. The board chair has petitioned some of the senators stating the current law, MMMAA, should not be changed. The board doesn't notify, the current board, the current board has now, doesn't notify complainants of the statuses of their cases against doctors, and has closed cases without ever informing the complainant. The medical board is in court, they've been sued for failing to set up basic consumer investigative procedures, as ordered by Judge Barcenas in a writ. They refuse to put medical negligence settlements into doctors' profiles as required by Guam law or to inform the public unless the doctor has three settlements in four years. So in their world, Guam Board of Medical Examiners world, three must die negligently to warrant notifying the public about the doctor's history of medical negligence. I don't think there's anybody that would agree that that's a good thing to do, but that's the way it's set up now. Bill 112 will improve medical care by not allowing negligent doctors to keep practicing as they are now. Let's keep one thing in mind, 1% of doctors commit 32% of malpractice nationally. On Guam, those doctors are not identified, as in other places, which degrades medical care on island and puts us at greater risk. Doctors who are considered washed up or have histories of medical negligence reportedly gravitate to Guam, being that it's easy to get licensed here, there's no need for medical accountability, or no need for malpractice insurance. Even the Guam Assistant Attorney General, Rob Weinberg, stated in a board meeting that Guam has the reputation of attracting washed-up doctors. And this is all due to the current law, MMMAA. I strongly support the amendment regarding the standard of care by a reasonable physician that provides care in another specialty because of the unavailability of a practitioner on island in a medical crisis. Of course, we need to do that. This is a great idea, of course, and practical, and will save lives, just like equally identifying negligent doctors will save lives. It's my opinion, you will not find one good Guam doctor who came to the island to escape malpractice insurance or to not be held accountable for medical negligence. I've been here almost 50 years, I've never heard of such a thing. That is not why doctors come here, but it's used as a primary reason to not change the current law. If you find such a doctor, as Assistant AG Weinberg implied, they probably came here due to Guam's reputation of being a place for washed-up doctors with no accountability, thanks to the MMMAA current law. Also, you will not find Guam doctors who will leave the island if the law is changed. This shallow threat does not hold water when you ask them individually, or as they were asked in a past hearing, I believe there was seven doctors at that hearing. Dr. Shea has said Guam doesn't need doctors, in a Guam post-interview he did a few years back, he said, "We need specialists." Specialist is exactly what we need, but specialists will find it difficult to come to Guam if they have to compete with other doctors already practicing on Guam, as is now because of the MMMAA, who practice outside of the special area. Guam doctors work outside of their expertise, and that's competing with any specialists who wants to set up shop on the island. It's a catch-22. We can't get doctors, well, the doctors have to work outside of their area, so therefore we can't get doctors. Well, I can't set up a shop there because I have to compete with doctors with a small population. This is the other dark side of the negative impact of the MMMAA on healthcare. It's also, by the way, the definition of malpractice, as was stated in a past hearing. Don't get me wrong, Guam has great doctors, I have like six doctors that I see, no names mentioned. Bill 11236 is not about them, it's about the others who hurt or kill or sexually abuses the people of Guam while being shouted by this law and freely walks to the next potential unknown patient victim. I just hope this legislative body can listen to the people of Guam who do not have financial interests at stake like the doctors who oppose changing this law. A white coat with all due respect doesn't know more than the rest of us outside of the medical area regarding public policy. We elected the senators, not them. I also wonder why when there are meetings to discuss medical negligence reforms, that they are closed door. No consumers or stakeholders allowed. It's actually an insult. Are our opinions and information not valid or informed enough, or do we raise issues that cannot be responded to? Please listen to both sides. People are dying, and it relates back to this law. The MMMAA, the current law, has been the worst thing, in my opinion, to happen to healthcare on Guam in three decades, and at the very least, has run its course of use from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lubovski. All right, we'll proceed with Attorney Mitchell Thompson.
Madam Speaker, committee members, a good afternoon. My name is Mitch Thompson. I've been an attorney in private practice here on Guam for over 35 years, and over those years, I represented both claimants and practitioners in medical malpractice matters. And based on that experience, I believe that Bill 112 will have negative consequences for the healthcare on Guam. Let me explain why. Malpractice insurance, which is difficult enough to obtain for most practitioners here, will be basically no longer available if Bill 112 is passed. For example, Guam Regional Medical City, the Guam SDA Clinic, both are currently insured by Lloyds of London. And they're lucky to do so because most insurers aren't interested in providing malpractice coverage for providers on Guam. But Lloyds has advised both GRMC and the Guam SDA Clinic that if the current arbitration law is repealed, they're not going to provide coverage here on Guam anymore. Why is that significant? Three reasons. One, it will be much harder to persuade practitioners, in particular specialists, to come to Guam if they are not going to have malpractice insurance coverage. Now, in the past, again, for example, GRMC, the Guam SDA Clinic have been able to bring in specialists on a permanent rotating basis to help provide better coverage for the folks here on Guam. But there's going to be few providers and specialists that are going to be willing to continue to do so if they have no malpractice insurance, and that's what's going to happen if Bill 112 is passed. Two, it will be much harder to settle claims because there will be no insurer to pay the settlement. Now, from my experience, most malpractice claims currently on Guam are being made against, once again, GRMC and SDA. Why is that? Because they have insurance, and plaintiff's attorneys know that if there is an insurer behind the practitioner, there's a fairly good chance the case can be settled, they can get some money. If Bill 112 is passed, no more insurance. It's going to be much harder for claims to be settled because there isn't an insurance company to write a check to settle a claim. It would be up to the provider or the practitioner, and that's going to be much harder. And so I think that ironically, if Bill 112 is passed, you're going to have, it's going to be a lot harder for claimants that have valid claims to be able to resolve them because there isn't an insurance company to write a check to settle the claim. Three, currently, providers with insurance, such as, again, for example, GRMC, Guam SDA Clinic, don't have to pay the cost if there's a claim made because they've got insurance. That's what insurance companies do. The insurance company hires a lawyer, incurs the expense. If there's no more malpractice insurance here, it's a completely different story. Regardless of the validity of the claim, the provider or the clinic is going to have to pay out of pocket to defend against that claim. What's the net result? Well, it's just an iron law of economics. The healthcare providers are going to have to increase their rates. Why is that? Because they have to cover the increased expense of defending against claims. And I don't think there's really any doubt that if the current law is repealed and Bill 112 is adopted in its place, there will be more claims. I mean, I think that's kind of the stated purpose, is we want to make it easier to make claims against healthcare providers. And so the net effect of that is that healthcare costs are going to rise on Guam because the practitioners are going to have to charge more to cover the defense costs. So the net effect of passing Bill 112 for patients on Guam is that there will be fewer providers, higher rates, and less access to healthcare. And frankly, the only winners, if this bill was passed, are the lawyers. Now, the personal injury lawyers, who take around a quarter, a third of any claim, it's great for them, they're going to make more money because there's more claims. And truth be told, firms like mine, which defend against medical malpractice claims, will probably get more business too, because there's going to be more claims. But the losers here will be the people of Guam. I urge you not to pass Bill 112. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Thompson. For the record, who do you represent today?
I'm here speaking as a concerned citizen.
Is this on? Howdy, Madam Speaker, and members of the 36 Guam Legislature. My name is Dr. Manaloto. I stand here before you today in unity with the members of the Guam medical community to oppose Bill 112-36 as substituted, which seeks to amend the Medical Malpractice Mandatory Arbitration Act and substitute it with the Medical Malpractice Pre-Screening Act. I won't go into extent in terms of my five-page testimony, but we'll choose excerpts from it if it's okay with the panel, just for the sake of time. Like the original Bill 112, the substituted bill achieves neither of the goals outlined in its legislative intent, which is to prevent the filing of court actions against healthcare providers for liability in situations where the factors do not permit a reasonable judgment of malpractice. Why is that? It's because, really, if it acts like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it's likely a duck. What does the bill actually achieve? The bill is a plaintiff-friendly bill, strongly supported by plaintiff attorneys, that removes the obligation to arbitrate and allows medical malpractice allegations to be fast-tracked into court. Please refer to subsection 10107, which states that regardless of the outcome of the non-binding pre-trial judgment by the judge, it does not hold water, right? They can still proceed to court either way. Now, what is the incentive for the plaintiff to settle, or to find an amicable settlement in this case? There's none. There's none. I won't reiterate a lot of the arguments that the medical community has already stated about this bill. So if we oppose it, where do we go from here? What's the options? We can't just ignore the cry of the community about what's been going on. So what's an alternative, right? If the cost and access to the MMA is the problem, then why don't we just fund it? Why don't we have the providers who want it fund it, and to earnestly fund it, to create a fiduciary fund, not a special fund that could be transferred here or there, that could be appropriated, but a fiduciary fund, similar to the retirement fund, to cover the plaintiff's expenses through a means-tested approach? How do we go about doing that? That means that if you're at the bottom ring in terms of our economic, of your ability to pay, guess what? This fund will fund 100%, 100% of the MMA for you. Okay? That's point number one. Who will pay for this? Well, the doctors want it and all the other medical providers, I think we should pay for it, and that's only fair. Number two, there has to be teeth to the MMA law. It has to provide, if amended, right, substantial financial penalties for physicians that perform gross negligence, right, to ensure the viability of this fiduciary fund. You just don't want, I wouldn't want to be paying for a negligent doctor, right? I don't want to be covering for their expenses, they have to reimburse this fund. Likewise, to prevent, like what Attorney Thompson has, is the flood of all these frivolous claims, there has to be skin in the game for the legal profession, who stands to benefit financially from this legislation, right? So, and I do like the proposed amendments, right? The amendment about, which is equivalent of a Good Samaritan law that would shield the doctor if they needed to save a patient's life, I do like that, right? So don't think that we're totally against everything, right? I do like that portion. I don't like the portion that the plaintiff has to pay for it. Why should the plaintiff have to pay for it? I think it should be the legal counsel. If we're saying that the basis that we're amending this is that they can't afford arbitration, how do you think the plaintiff, if they lose, will afford $80,000, which is the estimated cost of a four-and-a-half-year trial of litigation of medical malpractice? Now, how do we reduce the cost and still have great healthcare, right? Incorporate mandatory mediation as an alternative dispute resolution, which avoids 75% to 90% of litigation costs with an estimated savings of $50,000 per claim. Number three, right, increase competition in our healthcare industry. That's how you get quality. Quality is achieved by competition. Competition breeds excellence, right? We all, doctors are one of the most competitive people that you know, it's a competitive profession, we try to outdo each other. So instead of having one neurosurgeon, let's have three. Let's entice them, let's create an environment that will allow them to come here, right? Let's do that. And how do we go about doing that, right? We have the Government of Guam Claims Act right now, which only applies to the government of Guam providers, right? Why is it that there's a different set of rules always for GovGuam and for the rest of the community? I think, right, if we were to earnestly do tort reform, it should apply to the entire healthcare industry, not just for GovGuam, right? How does placing caps on malpractice claims help improve the environment here? Why? Because, you know, people have said it, medicine is a business, and as a business, right, you have to price things. How can an insurance carrier expect to give you premiums and price you on premiums if the limit is infinity? You can't work like that. And as Attorney Thompson has said, they're going to exit the market, you won't have anyone who'd be able to get insurance. So, you know, what is good for the goose ought to be good for the gander. If it's good for the governor of Guam, it should also be good for the private sector. Number five, modify the existing composition of the arbitration panel to include one off-island physician, one on-island physician, and someone from the legal profession, it can be a magistrate judge. Number four, establish, provide for established timelines to mandatory mediation and arbitration, right? The criticism has been that arbitration is too long. Well, you can change it, establish timelines, right? Say that you only have X amount of time to arbitrate, you only have X amount of time to mediate, but go through that process. Let's exhaust all of these processes first, then we go towards... Let's exhaust all of these processes first, then we go towards litigation if needed, right? And number four, I think you guys have done this in terms of providing the licensing boards the ability, the power, the resources to properly investigate these claims. And number eight is what you guys already stated, codify a Good Samaritan law that allows physicians to act in good faith with the consent of their patients to save the patients' lives. Now, on a personal note, I'd just like to say that, you know, the bill hits me in a way that it's the divisiveness of it, and I don't think it needs to be this divisive, right? It does not need to be this divisive. It pits one sector of our community against another, and I don't think we need to do that. I think cooler heads need to prevail, and we need to reduce the temperature and basically come up with a solution. Come up with a solution, work with the senators in terms of being able to provide both the protection of the consumers, our patients, at the same time, you know, protecting also the interests, right? Because doctors do have interests. We have interest to be able to make a living like anybody else, right? Stay in business like anybody else. And I think having this approach, right, instead of repealing the MMA, let's strengthen it. Take what works, take what doesn't work, and figure out a solution for this, right? I'm not a fan of us just copying things from off-island and trying to replicate them. We can do better than this, right? We can definitely do much better than 112-36 if we put and work together. That's what we need to do. We need to innovate and create a system that works for our island, and there's no better place than the house of the people here. And come up with a solution that only not, only aligns with our values as a community, but as a people. I'd like to leave just some words of wisdom from the late speaker Ben Pangolinan. Don't just think outside the box. Let's dismantle this box, and you will have real freedom in your revolution. Let your revolution not be swayed by the popular. Do not accept the idea of your dejure. Be revolutionaries of life and not martyrs to a life. Thank you for giving me this time, and thank you, I know I went over the five-minute limit, but thank you for allowing me to speak today and to share my thoughts. And like what I said, my door is always open. Let's come up with something. Sisus Masi, you guys, and advance Happy Thanksgiving and a blessed Christmas to you guys.
Sisus Masi, Dr. Manaloto. Could we get a copy of that? If my staff would make a copy, and I think the senators, if you could stay, we would like to ask some questions.
Sure, sure. I actually have a lot of things incorporated in this, a lot of research.
All right. If they could get a copy, we could pass it to the senators, they'd like to see it. And, all right, so thank you again to those who testified today. I was very lax on the time because there's only three of you signed up for 2:00, and there's a lot more signed up for 5:00 PM, so I'm going to have to be stricter at that time, but I do want to encourage a discussion here. And I'm not sure Dr. Manaloto, have you caught the intro, but that is exactly what we've been trying to do with this bill, is to work together on solutions. And there were a couple of things, since you testified most recently. You talked about incentives for, what is the incentives under this process? The incentives are exactly the same as under the current mandatory arbitration process. They just cost less. But the incentives are that if you lose as a plaintiff and you proceed to trial despite having been told something previously, you're going to pay if you can't, if you can't get an award higher, 40% higher than what you were previously awarded or determined in the pre-screening process, just like the current law says for mandatory arbitration. If you can't get 40% more than you were awarded in the mandatory arbitration, you're going to be the one to pay attorney's fees and costs. And so the other, the other thing is that mandatory mediation, again, so this bill, of course, what we're trying to do is come up with a pre-screening process. So arbitration's one, pre-screening process, mediation, and then this, the pre-screening judge is another. And all of these are used throughout the nation in medical cases to try to do something. Everybody has the same issue. We want to do something to protect doctors from frivolous claims, so we have these things. And across the nation, there are different standards, right? Some are mandatory mediation, but almost always, even in where they're mandated mediation, they can waive that or decide by agreement to get out of it because I guess the theory's mediation, when it's forced on you, it's just not going to be that successful. Arbitration is supposed to have done a lot of those things. I read the whole entire committee report from when this law was originally passed. It was supposed to be speedier, it was supposed to be less costly. And the problem is that it did not, it is not less costly. And in fact, the costs are just, it's the costs. And so we're trying to find a less expensive way. And when you talk about it can be funded another way, it can be funded another way, and that's one of the reasons I propose this way. It's because this is government-funded, pre-screening judges, they're available. If we continue to have approximately seven cases per year, as we currently have, I believe the court system can handle that. I believe the court system is already supposed to be capable of handling this type of complex claims, and that these people are naturally going to be capable, or they're going to have to learn to be capable to handle such claims, as they would if on appeal from arbitration, it goes to a trial. These are the same people we are entrusting every single day for every other profession and every other industry to handle these types of claims. The, you know, increasing doctors on the arbitration panel, of course, we've considered that as well, if that is the solution. My issue with that, I'll be frank with you, is that we currently have Guam Board of Medical Examiners comprised mostly of doctors. And while, you know, the doctors want to be the judge of doctors, they've had an issue with conflicts because of our small community, and that being able to get, you know, doctors to make a determination on a case doesn't always work because they will conflict out because they work with that doctor or have an association with that doctor for some other reason. And they are now looking to hire investigators. That's another costly process, right? But they're deeming it necessary, they're going to raise your fees in order to do that. And so that might be necessary as well. And so if the doctors want to also fund, another fund and fund arbitration panels, they have talked about that before, and I am open to that, but I don't think that, you know, I'm going to leave that to them amongst themselves to decide that, propose it or put it into their own processes. And that I do believe this is one way for the government to fund at minimal cost a pre-screening process if the parties do not agree to go to arbitration or mediation. And I just want to let you know, I did not copy this from off-island. We are trying, we did study off-island laws, of course, in order to do our due diligence, and we tried to get what would be good for Guam. And I really did consider, there are panels in other states where they have many doctors on the panel who will be the ones to make this determination, doctors and lawyers. But we have a very small community where our lawyers are serving on both sides of these cases. We have doctors who are naturally associated with other doctors, and that's our, that's our medical profession, or community here. And so finding ones who don't know that doctor, who can make a determination, I thought would be very difficult, and so I just wanted to bypass that and go straight to a person who could be competent, fair, and make a determination at a low cost to all of the people subsidized by the government, in fact. And that's just to get into the screening. And of course, plaintiffs are going to continue to pay for their attorneys, their expert witnesses, and travel costs if necessary, all of that. May I ask you, so Attorney Thompson, are there any other malpractice insurers on Guam that you are aware of in your practice?
You know, in my experience, besides Lloyd's, there was one other insurer, but I think that's just because the provider somehow was able to get it in another jurisdiction, and when they came to Guam, they, the other insurer, you know, for whatever reason, didn't cancel it. But I think there's a reason that Lloyd's is, as far as I know, the main insurance provider, and that's because really no one else wants to do it. And Lloyd's is an interesting insurer because it's not one company, it's a set of syndicates, and it's all very complicated and all that. But they're really, really the only ones that are, I think, currently offering a coverage. And again, there may be other insurers out there, but I do know for a fact that the Guam SDA Clinic and GRMC currently have their malpractice coverage through a Lloyd's syndicate.
So we've been told that there are others covered on Guam, and I definitely hope that other practitioners are covered on Guam. We've actually tried to confirm this, but have not received true confirmation, although we did receive testimony from some of the insurance carriers as well. So I do believe that there is additional coverage on Guam, but there is a law that requires malpractice insurance companies to report to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners any payouts that they have made. But we've followed up with this with the Guam Board, and they've claimed there has been no report filed by any insurance company. We followed up with the insurance commissioners to see if they could obtain that information as required by law, and they've not issued a response to that. But so, yeah, if I could confirm, I, we have not been able to confirm, and I'm just going to ask you your opinion on this, how many doctors on Guam are actually covered by malpractice insurance? Because it's our understanding, they take it or leave it, I mean, they're not all covered.
Right, and that's my understanding as well. I certainly haven't done a survey, so this is just really kind of off the cuff. The reason I mention GRMC and the Guam SDA is because they are two of our larger providers here, and they were able to get coverage. But I think you're right, Madam Speaker, that I think the sole practitioners, you know, the smaller clinics, they probably can't get insurance, either because they, you know, no one wants to offer it to them, or it's simply prohibitively expensive. I think the doctor probably could answer that question better than I can.
Or perhaps they don't need it because they're so protected by our arbitration law that they haven't had the need. Dr. Manaloto?
Yeah, I've actually tried inquiring because I came for practicing from Hawaii, seeing if I could, besides working for a GRMC, if I wanted to do anything else, like set up my own shop, and I was inquiring about insurance carriers, the carriers from Hawaii that were there. And I have not received any confirmation that any of them would be willing to insure me out here as a sole practitioner. And that goes back to my point that the fact is it's hard. We want this competition, we want the doctors to come here. How can you come here if you can't even get insurance? If you can't even get the basics of, you know, opening your doors up and making sure that you have insurance? It's not that the doctors don't want insurance, it's that we can't get insurance.
Lawyers have the same issue. And, but the, yeah, but the fact that the doctors are here, some of them are insured, some of them are not, that's, I guess, that's the, that's the case even with our mandatory arbitration law. So that's what I'm trying to say, is that even with our mandatory arbitration law, as you say, some of the doctors are not getting insurance. I'm going to open it up for the panel. This is a time check, it's quarter to four, and we have another hearing at 5:00 PM, but Senator Titekri.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And good afternoon, gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. It's kind of nice when it's a little bit, you know, less people, and we can all get our minds together, and I greatly appreciate your testimony. I will thoroughly look this over before even 5:00 to have any concerns, but, you know, Mr. Lombowski, I, David, you mentioned about statute limitations, and it's ironic because right before I came here, I was looking at all the jurisdictions for statute limitations, and Guam is one of six jurisdictions that only have a one-year statute of limitations. There are 31 jurisdictions, meaning all states and territories combined, 31 jurisdictions that have a two-year statute of limitations. And there are 14 jurisdictions that have a three-year statute of limitations. And then you have four-year, five-year, six-year, with one jurisdiction in each of those years that has a statute of limitation. So it's obvious that Guam is on the lower end for the one year. But I'm glad you brought it up because we're looking at the other jurisdictions, that 31 of these other jurisdictions have two years, and there's probably a reason behind that, you know, just going through the process. When you have an individual who believes that their loved one had passed away, their child had passed away, you're not in the right frame of mind, and it takes, you know, the grieving is longer than you can imagine for most people, and having them to have the opportunity to bring their case so that no other child or other parent could ever go through losing a child like that, it becomes difficult. So I can see why the majority is at two years, and, but thank you for bringing that exclamation. Yeah, sure, go ahead, Mr.
I think also, I think that from some of the reading I've done, is some people don't know they've been injured. They've developed something, time goes on, they find out, oh, this happened to you, blah, blah, blah. And as soon as they want to do something about and connect it back, the one year's passed. And I think that's the reason, some other jurisdictions. I remember reading, I forget what state it was, had three years, and that was one of the justifications medically, is that sometimes you don't know you've been injured until time passes, or you, or you don't, for whatever reason, you don't want to make a complaint. So it has more to do, I think, with injury and knowledge of the injury and the ability to make a complaint.
Yeah, understandable, thank you. And yeah, it's not just something immediate, you're absolutely right, I appreciate that. Attorney Thompson, we've been in front of each other for so long on this. I mean, this has gone on for four years. We are trying very hard, we know it's very sensitive. It's not something that can be just, you know, rammed through and, you know, done deal. It's going to take a lot of time to try and change something to make it, you know, more of a balance for both sides, a balance for the doctors as well as the patients as well. And when you came up, when you spoke about the medical malpractice insurance, you know, I think the speaker did bring up, you know, FHP, I believe, is self-insured, SDA is self-insured. But...
Senator, if I could just point out, as I mentioned earlier, the SDA clinic is insured through a Lloyd's of London syndicate, so it's not, it's not actually...
FHP, I'm sorry, maybe I'll correct myself. It's FHP that's self-insured. But I think the speaker touched on, you know, today makes it none difficult than getting insurance. I mean, we've had the insurance companies here, you were sitting in that roundtable, and I believe Moylins as well as Cassidy's provides medical malpractice insurance because I've visited them, and I had them come here. Have you tried, Doctor, to, you talked about Hawaii getting insurance and bringing it with you, but have you tried to actually approach Moylins Insurance or Cassidy's Insurance that have given out medical malpractice insurance?
No, I have not approached any of the local providers. Because when I first came back on island, that was not even a consideration because I was, I'd been told that getting a quote is already difficult to begin with, especially if you're a provider, a single practitioner provider. So there's different, there's differences. If you, let's say you're a part of a specialty group, there's three or four of you guys, they're more likely to give you something than versus if you're a single provider. It's the same... It's the same as health insurance. I can't go out as an individual and just procure health insurance for myself. What will need to happen is I need to either be part of a group, because, you know, it's the risk pool. It's one person versus a risk spread over many people.
Well, if you go to Cassidy's Insurance, they'll provide you actually a list of all specialized areas, from general practitioner to nurses to pharmacy, exactly how much the premium costs for each of those. So they do have it, and it's all listed. So I received a copy, I'll be happy to share it with you, too, so you can look at everything from OB-GYN to, you know, just like I said, general practitioner. It's listed.
But Senator, the rates that they quote you are based on the current environment in which the MMA is in place.
Right, which is...
Right? That's with the rates, so you're, we're trying to make a change in which if you change that, that may not be available anymore.
Right. But if you still have the mechanisms of protections in there, they will consider, I was a former insurance agent, property and casualty, so I worked for a couple of companies on Guam for insurance. And it's based on the liability, the probability of, you know, things being, for instance, this situation of those suing a doctor or a pharmacist or any of those in the medical field. And it's all based on how high the liability is. But according to this substituted bill, these precautions, as you mentioned earlier, are put in place to provide that long, you know, frivolous issues, the frivolous lawsuits, the ability for a doctor to be able to go a little bit outside the rem of their specialty to care for an individual, because there's nobody else there to take care of them. So these are assessed by an insurance adjuster who looks at these probabilities, and that's where the premium lies. Now, is it going to be substantially different? I think we put in here mechanisms to provide that safety net, because that safety net is still is the same insurance companies that are charged in every jurisdiction, every jurisdiction, because we're the only one that has a mandatory arbitration. So their liabilities are quite high in the mainland, or in California and all these states. They're quite high, because they're notorious for getting sued all the time. You know, if you look at our jurisdiction here and our culture, Guam, you've been on Guam quite a bit, you know, off and on, our culture is not in one to quickly sue a doctor. We're such a forgiving culture, you know, our island. So there's a lot of aspects that are put into place when determining the liability and the premium amount. So I know you want to say, go ahead.
Yes. No, in terms of being able to, so when an insurance carrier looks at the history of the market, right, you cited these other jurisdictions in terms of California, they're big insurance markets, right? They have adequate history about the frequency of claims and everything. How can you price something that has not occurred yet? And in terms of not having any limits, that's another aspect of it. How do you price something that is zero to infinity?
Yeah. And Senator, if I can add...
But wait, right, how can you price it? And that's the same way they price it on premiums in New York City for doctors who are working in New York, for doctors working in California, Los Angeles. Their premiums are extremely high.
And that's why they don't have doctors, Senator.
Yeah, but they don't have medical mandatory arbitration. You know, it's a free carte blanche for them, but that's cities. But if you go into like rural areas of America, where the population is very small, and you look at the premiums there, it's quite low. It's quite low. But you also, they also look at the, I can't say demographics, but they, like I said, the culture earlier, they look at culture. And Guam is not in that line of, you know, trigger happy to sue. I mean, we can say that here on Guam, because even though we don't have the data, which we've been trying to get from the Board of Medical Examiners, the data on how many people have actually, have actually tried to sue a doctor because they feel that they were wronged. We can't even get that data here. We've estimated about seven. We looked at Hawaii, which is a larger population, on how many suits are done in Hawaii, and that came up to about seven to six. So Guam is such a smaller population, I think it'll be lower. And I like the fact that you brought up, well, let's have the doctors pay for this cost of arbitration. You know, I heard that, what you said, but that's ironic, because I don't know if you were here earlier, like I said, this has been going on for over three years. They were only going to offer $100,000. Do you know how much the mandatory medical arbitration act, I mean, the malpractice costs? It's about $70,000 for one, for one. So if we put, what, $100,000 in this fund from the doctors, it's, what, it's going to carry 1.5% of a person? You know, we've got to find another solution to help with respect to that. Go ahead.
And going in line with that, Senator, if it's the amount is the problem, $100,000, then you take the 400 doctors that are there, divide the 700,000, right? We also have monies available, right? The fees is not the only areas. We have QC money. We have money that these healthcare facilities pay towards the government in order to improve healthcare, improve access. That's really the spirit of the law of these QC's, right? So if it's not enough, right, what you do is you create a fund and ensure the fund is viable. As a former certified public accountant, auditor, there's ways and mechanisms, you can do this. You can safeguard this fund, right? You can prevent it from being rated upon, similar to the retirement fund. And guess what? You can have mechanisms in place that if you fall below a solvency, right, the solvency of the fund is in danger, then guess what? You guys have to pay more. Therefore, police your own. That's the way to do it, right? So if the amount is $100,000 is too little, then they may not actually know. Then let's raise what needs to happen, right? Let's have not just the doctors, but really, this bill, as written, does not only cover doctors, right? If you look at the data, doctors are not the most sued in the nation. It's actually nurses, right? It covers nurses and anyone involved in the healing arts. So anyone involved in that profession, right, should have some contribution to this fund.
Thank you for that. The last thing, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, just my last question with regards to caps on liability. You mentioned it earlier about how Gov Guam has the Guam Government Guam Claims Act, right? How do you feel about caps? Some jurisdictions have caps. In fact, I have a listing. We have some, let's go, we have 18 jurisdictions that do not have any medical cap, 18. 19 jurisdictions with 1 million or more medical liability cap, nine jurisdictions. And 25 jurisdictions with less than 1 million medical liability cap, of which 10 jurisdictions impose less than $500,000 medical liability cap, which is now Government of Guam's, you know, limit at 500, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. California, $250,000, non-economical damages. Hawaii, 375, non-economical damages. And it goes down the list of, you know, those 25 jurisdictions breaking it up. So my question is to you, how do you feel about those, about a cap?
We have caps right now, but the caps is only for Gov Guam.
Right. Because they work, these doctors work for Government of Guam. They don't have, they don't work under their private, you know, company, unless they do it outside of Guam Memorial. But they're not, they're a private entity. These doctors work for the Government of Guam, and Government of Guam is responsible for them. Now, I'm talking about the private sector. Should there be a cap on that?
Okay. Just some two points, Senator. I'm glad that you mentioned the part about jurisdictions with and without caps, because that's been extensively researched, and, you know, there's a lot of research that's gone on to this, right? I would like you to read in terms of viscusi. I actually have, it's a journal article. And they actually studied that in terms of what will happen if one jurisdiction enacts reforms such as caps versus one that does not. And let me just read an excerpt of it, if it's okay. "More favorable liability environments in its neighboring state leads to expected exit of physicians." So in the United States, they're contiguous. So if your neighboring state decides to enact reforms, caps, there's an exit of physicians from that state, right, that does not have it, to the states that do have it, as the ratio or the number of physicians to the population of the base period state declines after the neighboring states have adopted the reform. So it does affect the behavior of physicians, right? They go to a place where it's more favorable. So in terms of your question, like what I said, what's goose for the, what's great for the goose ought to be good for the gander, right? If we have caps, and I think caps will help, will definitely help in terms of being able to get malpractice insurance. Because I'd rather pay the dollar that I have to one of the companies here, keep the money here locally, because guess what? Now these insurance companies can adequately price the market, because they know this is how much is the limit. And that's why I say, in terms of how can you price something that right now, there's, it's, you don't know. And in a risk, in a risk determining industry such as the insurance industry, that's what it is. They basically assess and determine risk profile, right? And the worst thing that you can have in that is ambiguity, right? Not knowing what you're there for. So I wholeheartedly agree, and, you know, I support that what the cap should be for Gov Guam should be also for the clinics. Because guess what? That will allow us to be able to recruit doctors, just as a personal experience. Our hospital is trying, has been trying for two years to recruit an interventional radiologist. We want to get the same quality of care, right? That if you have a heart attack in Hawaii, if you have a heart attack in California, you should have that same service here. That same doctor should be here. But guess what? Regardless of how hard and the compensation package, it boils down to the environment. It's the practice environment. We try to tell them, you know, people here, like what you stated, culturally, we're not a litigious people, but we have to create these systems and environment that allows the medical profession to thrive and to be able to provide the care that we do. And I think having these caps, Senator, consider it wholeheartedly, right? Because that can tell you right now, if you have those caps, we can get, like what you said, Cassidy's, all these other local insurance companies. I'd rather pay money to keep jobs here, right? To keep good-paying jobs here, rather than send it off, off-island.
Okay, thank you, Doctor. And I'd like to thank you for, you know, even admitting that there needs to be some kind of balance, you know, something between the patient and the doctor. And you're one of like maybe six doctors who came to testify in the last three years who realized that there is something with our current law that's not fair. So I just want to thank you for coming in here and providing some types of, some solutions, you know, to making a win-win for everyone here. But the people are the ones that, I'm sorry, you were going to say it, but can you cut it short? Because I'm already getting a signal.
And I'm not one to, Senator, I come before you, because, you know, there's two sides to this coin, right?
Right.
Right? There's always two sides to this coin, right? In terms of, we have to strike a balance. We have to strike this balance, right? But we, as Mr. Lembowski has said, it's a few percentage, it's small percentage. But at the same time, right, our healthcare system is so fragile here. It's such a fragile system. And what we should be working on really is access to care, right? When patients come through the ER, they're very sick, right? And a lot of times, you really can't do anything anymore. A lot of the stuff that should have happened, the health literacy, right, the education, right, all of that stuff, right? That's what I want. We don't need just specialists. We need a lot of doctors. And we have more doctors, that's better for the island, that's better for the patients, that's better for the consumers, right? And that's better for the profession, because it forces, it forces the profession to look upon itself and to compete against each other.
Like you said, competition. But I also believe that specialized care is very difficult in any area where the population is so low. That's why rural America areas with less than 100,000 people living in one area cannot get specialized care. I mean, I think SDA, and I think there's other clinics that bring in somebody on a rotating basis, maybe every six months, they'll bring a specialist in. But that individual actually covers, is covered by medical malpractice insurance. So these specialists that come here, they have the insurance. And then when they leave, you know, they come, they leave for a while, but they come back. So it's very difficult to get any kind of specialist on this island for something that's not, you know, always, doctors always have to, an average general practitioner cannot handle, in other words. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you. My point in pointing out what GMH has afforded for hiring of doctors and recruiting specialists and retaining them, $5 million in one fiscal year just for that. And still, even with the caps at GMH, they have been unable to recruit those doctors, those specialists. So the caps, I mean, we hear your argument, and we've studied the states, but I'm just saying, that also goes both ways. Even with the caps, they have not been able to recruit. And same thing with the... Sorry, I lost my train of thought, but I'll get back to it. Senator Brown, your turn.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the three of you coming forth and providing your testimony. I know it's been a long and winding road. Certainly last year, when this issue came before us with the introduction of this bill, you know, we heard a lot of very divided positions from both the medical community and certainly members of our community, our residents out there, that have felt that this current system, the way it's set up, is at a tremendous disadvantage, because the average person out there, if they feel that they were not properly treated, or a family member in Mr. Lembowski's case, that, you know, the deck essentially stacked against them, and they would have no option, no recourse to address what they feel or the means of which they felt they might have been harmed by the, someone in the medical profession. I'm hopeful in this process, as I mentioned last year, that we can come to a middle road, that we can come to some consensus on how do we address this. Because litigation, no matter how you look at it, if you ever get to that point, it's an expensive process for all parties involved. Even the average person out there might have a disagreement with their neighbor about something. It's a very, very expensive process. And I'm sure, and hopeful, a lot of thought goes into it, because there's, there's always a concern that perhaps when we're wronged, that we should have some recourse, particularly something that affects your health and well-being, or the health and well-being of your loved one or your family member. And I think that ultimately was the objective in getting this bill introduced and putting this before our community, even though we recognize that it's caused a lot of division. And I'm hopeful in continued testimony this evening, Madam Speaker, that we can get also more favorable input on how can we come, you know, how can we come to some sort of consensus so that we have legislation that can move forward and essentially balance this issue between our medical community and our residents? Because that's the main concern I keep hearing from our people, is that their voices are not being heard, or that the system's set up, that they really, unless they have a whole lot of money in their back pocket, that there's no recourse available for them if they feel that they have not been properly treated in terms of healthcare here on the island. So I don't have any questions. I do appreciate your input with regards to this issue. I look forward this evening also to hearing more from members of our community and also members from the medical profession with regards to this bill. So thank you very much for coming this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Sinagstein.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, as I hear the testimony of the three gentlemen here, as I co-sponsored the bill, some may have thought that maybe because I'm not here, I'm not listening, I am watching what's going on. I'm well aware, and I'm being kept informed of there's any changes. But as the doctor here mentioned, Dr. Manaloto, right?
Yes.
Sir, you mentioned, police yourself and fix it. You proposed that, right? Has anything has been put in paper to police and fix it, other than we're waiting for another victim, and then the issue of arbitration and all the reasons why it can't get settled? I mean, I'm just curious, because as I, as I listened to Dave's, Lembowski's statement of the medical board, four years, 47 cases? No real results, you know? And I'm just concerned is that maybe the board needs to be changed, maybe it's not all doctors, maybe we should get other folks also involved in it? And maybe they'll find a solution? Maybe there'll be some resolution? Maybe the policing can start? I'm just curious. Yes, Doc?
Senator, that I brought that in, that that statement was in reference to if we create a fiduciary fund, right? Especially, you're the chair of appropriations, you know that. You, you know exactly what I'm talking about in terms of being able to protect the integrity corpus of that fund, so that you ensure that that funding mechanism is real. It's not, it's not no shadow appropriation. It's real money.
It's real money there available to actually assist, you know, the plaintiffs when they need it, right? That's what I'm saying in terms of, if you set a limit in terms of where this fund is solvent, right? You create a fund, and you see how many malpractice claims there are, right? This is not going to fund the defendant, this is not the physician. This is a means-tested approach, meaning that if you're below a certain income level, right? It will cover the process for you. And how do you ensure that that fund becomes viable? By, if there are claims, if, you know, if the arbitration panel, if you change the composition and there are claims and it says it's gross negligence, guess what? You, that, that healthcare provider, you pay back that fund, right? You restore the corpus of that fund that was taken out. And that's how you can do it. And that's how, you know, and if, if there's a lot of claims, right? Within this fund, there's a lot of withdrawals, more so than the deposits, then you know what? It's going to force the community. Because I don't want to be paying more premiums for someone's negligence, right? So that's the way that you can do it. You can have these fiscal mechanisms in place to ensure that the fund is viable, that this is an actual cash sitting, safeguarded. No one's going to transfer it, no one's going to appropriate it, that that, it's the sole purpose of this fund, is to meet the arbitration costs and to be able to allow all residents of Guam, regardless of ability to pay, to be able to access it.
Okay. And for Mr. Thompson, you brought up the issue of the G R M C, and I think it was Take Care or F H P? They have, they have the insurance?
Currently, yes, that's correct, Senator.
What prevents others from not getting it, in general?
Well, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues. I mean, as, as the doctor mentioned, it, you know, for smaller, sole practitioners and smaller clinics, they may just, the insurer just may not be interested. For others, it may be the cost. I think at one of the prior hearings, Dr. Shea testified that the last time he carried insurance, they wanted to increase his premium to over $100,000, and he just, you know, didn't want to pay that, understandably. So I, I think there's probably a lot of reasons why providers who don't have insurance. But I, I just want to emphasize that my point is, is that under the current law, some folks are able to get it. Generally speaking, I think the larger clinics. The concern is, and this is based on what Lloyds has told both SDA and G R M C, is that if the law changes, they're not going to offer coverage anymore. And I think that is detrimental to everybody involved, the doctors, the patients, everybody here.
But would you recommend, and then if that's the case, that the law, if the amendment was made to this bill to identify that everybody, and get, and, and then we reach out to the insurance folks and say, okay, if every registered doctor is paying, what is the cost going to be? Do you understand where I'm coming from, Doc and Mrs. Thompson? So that we don't make the excuse that G R M C has to make sure? No, no, no. Everybody must pay, so that we can find a way to come to some resolution.
Yes, and Senator, you know, my understanding is the concern here is that the cost of the current arbitration law is preventing some folks from pursuing their claims. And previously, I, there was a bill introduced, I believe by Senator Munia Barnes, which tracked what the doctor was telling, was answering some questions earlier, whereby a fund would be created, it would be funded by the healthcare providers. And the idea is, is that if someone, there would be some screening of the claim, if it looked like the claim had merit, but the person was indigent, the fund would basically bankroll the claim. And if the claim it won, he or she would have to reimburse the amount that was recovered. Typically, from my experience in arbitration, the arbitrators will award costs to the prevailing party. Now, they don't always do that, sometimes they split it, and they say, okay, claim it, you pay half of the cost, practitioner, you pay half. But the arbitrators under the current law have the authority to say, no, we're going to say that the doctor pays all the costs. Or if the doctor wins, they could say the plaintiff pays all the costs. But the point is, is that this would be kind of a revolving fund, and that as, if the plaintiff recovered, he or she would have to reimburse the amount that was advanced. And so that would replenish the fund, such that when the next person came along, and he or she had what appeared to be a meritorious claim, but because they lacked the finances to pursue it, there would be a funding mechanism for them. And I think that really addresses the issue here. Because if, if that is the issue, there are indigent folks that cannot pursue valid claims, I think that mechanism addresses the issue. And we can talk about, you know, the details of that, but I think that concept would solve the problem, as I understand it.
Thank you, sir. Doc?
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. I know you're a numbers guy, so you know where I'm coming from. Excellent question in terms of that. And I think, you know, being able to get malpractice insurance, and that's why I go back to the question of the caps, right? If we have caps now for Gov Guam, in order to be able to do that, right? If you want to practice on Guam and you want to require them to have an insurance, have a market for it, right? Encourage that by having these caps across the board, not just for the government facilities, right? Everybody. I mean, I watch you guys in my spare time, because probably, besides taking care of my kids, I don't have a life, right? And taking care of my patients, of course. But you know, I always hear, like, you know, Senator Brown say, why is there a different set of rules, right? For the government, a certain group of people, and then not for other people, right? So I think this is, is opportune time to start talking about this, because all of these issues are interconnected. It's not just an issue of liability. Why is it that the doctors don't have malpractice, right? Why, and how can we go about changing things so that they are able to get insurance? So I, I think, you know, having these caps, so that if it changes, if the legislature deems that, you know, inflation is up, let's change the caps, it raises for everybody. And not just one group, you know, one group of people versus another, everybody, right? And I think we, how is it fundamentally different? I work both at GMH and G R M C. I help out at GMH. Because you know what? Our public hospital needs help. They need more doctors, right? So in my spare time, I do a week there, a week or two there, right? How is it different that I'm the same doctor, but when I step onto GMH, I have a cap, and then I step onto G R M C, I don't have a cap? I'm the same physician, right? And that's where I, I go to the issue of parity, right? In terms of, if we have these changes, let's create a market. And like what I said, instead of Lloyds of London, no, I love our insurers, by the way, but if I'm able to get and keep my healthcare dollars here, to employ the people here, right? I'd rather do that. I'd rather to talk to someone in one of our local insurance carriers than have to wake up 3:00 AM in the morning to try to catch someone from off island.
Thank you, Doc. Madam Speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinagastin. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So a question for Dr. Manaloto. So you said you worked in Hawaii before?
Mm-hmm.
And are you familiar with the, I guess, the laws there regarding malpractice?
Yeah, they have a pre-screening.
Okay. And how did that work in your experience?
Well, during that time that I was in Hawaii, I was under the, the training program in terms of the internal medicine. So they actually covered it, right? I don't, I did not have any claims, so I would not have any experience with how that would work. I don't have any personal experience. But I do want to bring up, it's great that you, you brought that up, Senator, in terms of, because there's a lot of studies that have been done about these pre-screening trials, right? In terms of everyone, this, this, these discussions are not new. Everyone has studied them, there's a lot of research, right? And there's actually a study here that points to that. It actually answers that question, right? It's, it's called the Medical Malpractice Evidence of Reform Alternative in Claims Involving Elderly Patients in for Medicare Payment Advisory Commission, where they actually studied that, right? Do pre-screening trials reduce costs? Number one. Do they also reduce claims costs? Do they reduce claims frequency? And do they reduce, is it cheap, is it basically cheaper, right? Was the question that they wanted. And then this panel, Medicare, right? It's a government panel that said, "A handful of well-designed studies have examined the effects of pre-trial screening panels similar to Hawaii, and the weight of the evidence suggests that they are not effective in reducing the claim frequency, claims costs, and malpractice insurance claims." So I don't have any personal experience with it, because I've never had a claim while I was in Hawaii. But they have studied this issue in other jurisdictions, right? Medicare, trust me, healthcare costs are skyrocketing throughout the nation. Drug costs are skyrocketing, right? How much is the medical malpractice industry? It's estimated to be around $72 to $122 billion a year. That's a lot of money. And who pays for that? The consumers, the patients, right? And in this, in terms of the government, the taxpayers. We all want something that's cheaper, right? But I don't think pre-screening trials is the way to go.
Okay, so yeah, it's my understanding that the, the laws in Hawaii are just more lax as far as pre-screening. And so what happens in the panel is that the plaintiff and defendant meet, the question is asked, are you sure you want to sue? And if plaintiff says yes, then it goes to court. So there's a lot less, you know, checks and balances in the Hawaii system. And, you know, I think, you know, with this bill, I think they're, they're trying to work on getting more fairness. I think that's the, what the, the attempts have been. So yeah, I'm kind of curious, Attorney Thompson, regarding, you know, the insurance system. So, you know, I guess, what, do, are you familiar with Hawaii's case? Because I'm trying to find like a model place that we can follow, potentially, you know, as a, as a, you know, way to, to compromise the, the needs of both, you know, the, the people that are seeking access to, you know, to, to justice and the, you know, the prevention of frivolous cases.
Right, Senator. Unfortunately, I, I don't have any personal experience with Hawaii. I do know they have a cap. And I, I think that, as Dr. Manaloto has indicated, you know, a cap would make a big difference, because that would limit the uncertainty that an insurer would face as far as trying to decide whether or not to exit the Guam market. And so I think that's one, one other factor to consider, is that perhaps in Hawaii, they have a looser screening system, but at the same time, they have a cap on non-economic damages, which, you know, probably balanced things out. But again, I don't have any particular information about Hawaii, unfortunately.
Okay. And in regards to Lloyds of London, what is the reason for, if, if, you know, what is the issue?
Well, from my experience, Lloyds often will insure risks that no one else wants to undertake. But of course, the reason they do that is that they can charge a higher premium, because it's a risk that no one else wants. So that's why I think Lloyds is willing for some of the larger clinics to offer coverage, but again, at a price.
What particular in the bill are they?
Well, you know, I, I, well, let me just try to restate my concern, and that's based on discussions with folks at SDA and G R M C. They have been told by their insurer that if the arbitration law is repealed, Lloyds is going to exit the market. And that's bad news, because they, as, they may not be able to find a replacement insurer. And I think that's bad for everybody, for the reasons that, that we've already discussed.
All right. That's my questions for now. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. I'm hoping that, as we say, cool minds shall prevail, and that you, with your legal skills, will be able to prevail upon, for your clients, Lloyds of London, that there are still protections in this law, and that in fact, instead of the very costly arbitration fees and costs that they currently pay in the mandatory arbitration law, that there, they will still be entitled to arbitration, and they can, in fact, offer to pay those for clients, to induce them, or for patients, and to entice them to go to arbitration, if they really want to go to arbitration. Otherwise, we have a government-funded, less costly way to screen, and equally competent, in my opinion, because I'm, that's why I'm saying these pre-screening judges. And, and so that's really the gist, is we are putting in, just like we did with mandatory arbitration, a pre-trial process, offering options of arbitration in any format that you agree on, the option of mediation, and instead of lawyers funding other lawyers' negligence, a government-funded pre-screening process, just to ensure that frivolous claims are going to be weeded out early, and that just the same considerations made in the current expensive arbitration process, that we will have somebody to make those types of determinations at the, in the least expensive way. And I think that's really the difference. So we have currently, we can continue to require the most expensive way to do this pre-trial, either screening or arbitration. And our, our proposal before you today is a compromise to allow arbitration in any way you want. It can be one panel, it can be whichever company you want to go to, it can be three panels, the way it is today. You can pay it, you can entice the plaintiffs to go there, but you do it by agreement. And if that, and if not, and you want the least expensive way, in my opinion, would be this, to go through a pre-screening, we're setting up a pre-screening process that is going to save insurance companies money, is going to save everybody, both sides, money from paying, well, especially plaintiffs. And this is really the thing, plaintiffs are the ones who pay the filing costs, and the, and then both parties pay the arbitrators. We have seen proposals for doctor-funded funds, but we've also heard from some doctors that why should they pay for claims that other doctors are responsible for? And so that's why this proposal before you leaves it an option that doctors, they can offer to pay for arbitration, if that's what they really want to do, and if they think that's the way to go, they can do that for their own cases. But we're not going to make that mandatory or required for all, for only doctors or nurses to pay for those who are, are making the claims. We're actually spreading this out, and I think in a very cost-effective way throughout all of the people of Guam. And again, this is some extra protection being provided to doctors on top of the current protections by statute. And I have read studies about caps. This bill does not affect caps. There are no caps on Guam right now, as you stated, and this bill does not affect caps. It's only intended to affect mandatory three-panel arbitration with a certain company versus another type of pre-screening with a pre-screening judge on Guam, and without the expensive filing fees and arbitrators' fees. The caps that you, that have been pointed out repeatedly that are in place for government claims in all cases, not just at the hospital, but everywhere throughout the government, yes, there are caps. And most especially for government doctors, they're not making the profits that the private businesses are. This is like all public service, is that this is the compromise. We are going to cover you, you are a little bit more protected maybe with caps. Well, the government is protected by the caps. I don't think the doctors have any personal liability, except for licensing. And that is a trade-off for us to recruit them into our hospitals. And that is a trade-off for us to recruit them into our hospitals versus, you know, private service where, where profits do that. Profits maybe compensate for, or are the recruitment tools and things like that. So there are trade-offs and this is throughout the states, throughout every industry, in fact. Yeah, so I, I just hope that, you know, we, we can all acknowledge that we have taken into account many of the proposals that have been made. And it's, I, I think this is the least costly proposal. And this one is also fair because there is a competent person charged with making this, or doing the pre-screening. But I want to thank all of you for your testimony and we will continue to consider all that has been submitted in writing especially. And Mr. Lebowski, you wanted to say something?
Can I say something real fast, please?
Real fast.
I know we're out of time. We keep using the word indigent. This bill is not about indigent. This bill is about the people of Guam. I know the attorney used that and we've used that in the past. No one can afford $50,000 for arbitration the way it is now. If we're going to apply indigent M I P criteria, almost nobody on the, we might as well leave now because almost no one on the island will qualify. The second thing is, from my research, Doc, and you are correct, there are caps in many, many places, but they have also found in some places with caps, there's been increases in claims. I'm not sure why, maybe because they pay out easier or whatever. And the last thing I wanted to say, just to be clear, this is not about one person, this is, I might be the loudest voice on the island about this, but this is about thousands of people. There's a, we have a, 3,500 people that signed a petition. Their comments go on and on and on how this bill and how malpractice has affected them. The whole conversation about negligent doctors and what we should do about them. There's people, there's people who have claims of the same doctor over and over again, especially on, we got in C-sections. Anyways, I just wanted to make those last points. I know we're out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I also saw a study about caps that talks about the care that is provided when there are caps in place. And so I'm sure there are studies, different ones, but as I said, caps are not being considered today, not in this bill, not in this version of the bill either. And, you know, we're open to considering caps, but that, that's in a separate, that would, for me, be in a separate piece of legislation. All right. Again, thank you all. Thank you for your testimony today. Sisus Masie. We are now going to re, reconvene, we'll close, and we will reconvene at 5:00 PM for the second roundtable public hearing on substitute bill number 112-36-COR. Sisus Masie.